All members present, Monica Flores, Rebecca Silva, Frank Gonzalez, and Ms. Juana Peace. I'll sit there with the board, and Doriana Longres on this floor. Okay, all members, I want to remind you that we cannot enter into discussion on items presented by the citizens because it is not under justice. Colonel Perez, please keep time. We want to hear from as many citizens as possible in the room. So I ask everyone to be mindful of the time allotted and advise you that you cannot give your time to another person. Your input will be presented to the city council, and our limit is two minutes per citizen.
The next, the first speaker is, and I apologize if I mispronounce your names, but Geras Herndon?
Yes.
Or Chip.
Yes.
What I'm going to say about you. Well, let's have him, sir. There you go.
My name is Geras Herndon, and I am the president and chairman of Florida County. I've been involved with the county now for the past seven years, five of which have been still in Florida. Throughout the years, I've been involved with the county, I have noticed a big significant change in the county's heart, in the apartment block, like, every year since the county was here. They have big sinkholes out in the outfield that we can't fully fill in, and sooner or later, they have to be filled in. I believe this is due to oil coming out the river, or no, in the river, but I do my guess. And we have big problems with lights running out all the time. Just past Thursday, we had a incident with oil breakers for our area field, which is the biggest hill we have out there. Oil breakers started smoking, up here, so we've got to cut off the line. The concession stands have water out there because it was after the disrepair. A couple years ago, we hosted a native boys' county, native boys' hall, thanks to the local club. And those of them who wanted to go on to the little league, don't serve, which is why they're involved with the county, they're supporting the county. You know, in the course of the tournament, we had a bad problem with the dockers' spectacle. Turned out to be an early experience, my eye, my opinion, a day plus, a black eye, because we had cameras burning, rifles, and steam. I believe stock they all probably heard. Like I said, the concession stands, in my opinion, have been under a, electric inspection right now, they're going past. There are holes everywhere. You can't count the second order, you're not letting me compete, in my opinion. I know every year, we always battle with the soccer about setting up our football fields, so space is another issue. We're trying our best, we're taking care of the wildcat, because the wildcat share, the buildings up there during the fall, we play fall balls, so it's a minimal amount of term that would help the practice, it would help the practice. They keep putting bandages on the lights out there. I mean, for one pole to be done correctly, new wiring and whatnot, we're looking at a cost of three more, thirty-five, ten thousand dollars, and by now, we should be on top of that kind of money. The money that we generate goes to cover the cost of newborns, goes to cover the cost of used lights, universal tires, to address the supply in the concession stand, so. We really don't have a big.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Jim Miller?
There's no doubt in my mind that a sports complex is probably a good idea. The question is very major, is that this board has to consider it because, well, how did we get to this point? The city council has not formally chosen to build a sports complex. It has been an agenda item the council has been obligated to approve. For this board to say, oh, we're going to fund an interlocal agreement for sports complex, seems kind of very much like the cart before the horse. Second issue, that I think this board needs to consider, is the legality of what you're doing. Mr. Bill Otto stated at the city council meeting that the voters approved this sports venue, and therefore, this is, can be done. The voters approved the four V-packs made for nineteen ninety-six. And if you looked at my letter, in the third paragraph, economic development, and the public fund office of the attorney general states, quote, "Before the seventy-ninth legislature session, the initial authorization such for V-packs would be considered by the voters as a separate ballot." Similarly, any sports venue project must be considered by the voters as a separate ballot proposition. Seventy-ninth legislature met July two thousand and five. They passed House Bill thirty-one ninety-five, and since then, we've put it on the same ballot. That did not become effective until September one, two thousand and seven. I contend that the statement made by your bottom council, that the voters already approved a sports venue, is false. And for this board to obligate sales tax money for such a project would be in violation of the Economic Development Act of nineteen seventy-nine. Thirdly, priorities. The city, one of the issues that was brought up at the city council meeting was internet. The mayor stated, as I said, that, oh, no, no, because it was not on the ballot, the four V-funds could not be used for that. I tend to disagree. It is very, very specific in the Economic Development handbook that this board can't consider such projects. And I've included comments, excerpts from that, highlighted those people. Besides, economic development can actually spend money on other infrastructure needs that the city may have, and it details those, things like water and streets. Something that this city has some definite problems with. And also, I would refer you to the recommendation of the city's master plan. They provided immediate recommendations for immediate needs, things like water improvements, sewer plant improvements, all of which have yet to be funded. But when we get a USDA loan, why don't we still gotta pay that home somehow? Let's fund those projects. Let's fund those one- to three-year projects, and those five- to ten-year projects. And then, let's talk about the sports venue. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Win Hopkins?
I've got some pictures all over the place, though. So my, the pictures of the sports complex, the pictures of the tents, the winters. I've been in Little League for nine years, and since I've been there with the people, and he's going up to junior field house, and he's taking our high school. Because I've been there, the concession stands have had one golden penny moment, the fence has been made of concrete. I've got sinkholes out there, there are plenty of sinkholes, people swallow my paper. I go out there every time, after a rain, I walk in, I feel sinkholes over. It's at the point where I ask the city to bring a backhoe, dig it out, fill it back in. Y'all may be against the sports complex, okay, fine, let's fix that, let's find something for the kids before somebody gets hurt. I'm looking at these kids playing high school for the Tigers. All this politics about everything else, what we did with the civic center, yeah, civic center, okay, people screw up. That's over with, it's done. Let's look at the kids. We're looking at the future. We got a long field coming in. It's just now, will you donate? Name a field, Maradona, if you want to put a million dollars down, build a field, let's name it Maradona Field. I don't know, this will be field one, two, three, or four, okay, well, you can play on field one. But it's the safety of the kids. I've got a sign on the school board out there, it's not worth it for the money breaking box inside the concession stand. I, city tells me, I need three bids. I've got four bids. They go from four thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars. Every one of the electricians has pulled their bid. They pick from A to B. C's will start the fire. Then they gonna lose their license, that's our livelihood. They're pulling their bid back. Our best sponsor for pulling their money back for next year, because I cannot get electricity to make the softball, school board. We spent forty-seven hundred dollars on the league field to do the lights. The chairman was talking about four light poles, we're going to replace the balances, the lights. I got a crane out there to do nineteen lights. We spent forty-seven hundred dollars. I've got twenty-six more lights to do for that junior field. I'm looking at fifty-five hundred dollars. Y'all can complain about taxes and everything else, but I'm, I'm talking about the kids to play now.
Mr. Mary Helen Keegan?
Good evening. Um, please, what I would ask. In my part of the priority, there is absolutely no one to be against, even something for our kids. My son played out on that old field, had a ball that they had been great on. We have nothing against improvement of facilities, but if we do not have adequate water, maybe, street, and other necessary, required elements to maintain this city structure, what good can they do? But for priorities, and not be swayed by emotions, I think, no, I would be against something of this sort. So if you would, I would encourage you to small and simple level of priorities, go back to our city plan, and play down the time, and sort of explore. If you don't have the necessary vertical components, you don't have the, and being on a tightrope, and businesses will suffer and not be, and so, completely, please, if they are not, they're a part of it.
Do you see you, Murphy?
Good evening. Well, in the May second issue of Florisville News, Mr. Gibbs quoted me more eloquently than I was, and reminded the council that y'all had promised a hundred thousand dollars a year to the alma college, and that you were two years in arrears. Now, before assuming the debt for the sports complex, had y'all caught up your payments to the alma college? Can you answer that question? So you're not. So you're willing to assume another million, one million point eight debt, and you still are two years in arrears to alma college?
So we both agree with that.
But can you answer that question?
Because it's not on your agenda, we can't.
Do you know whether you pay alma colleges? You don't know whether you pay?
I do.
You just won't answer the question.
We can't do that. They can't do that.
Can you do that?
No.
Where do I get that answer?
Say again, you come to my office tomorrow and I'll talk.
Where's y'all?
Right here in City Hall, just come into the front desk and ask.
I've got a doctor appointment at eight-thirty, I'll be here at ten.
Yes, ma'am. This one, I may butcher it, but it looks like Vince Jonathan?
Venice Grantham? Yeah.
Or Grantham, or.
Grantham.
Apologize, but.
I've been called up today. But that's okay, I'm in anything for like a dinner. Um, no, all I ask is that you do look at the priorities, and, I mean, we're, the country needs that. Our free tips, our county, our city, unless, you know, we get our act in, in good gear. I mean, it goes right out there, it's supposed to start the rest, right? Let's get Florisville straightened out, and keep our debt down, don't acquire any more debt. Just try to fix the things that are on the agenda, as far as football fields, the water, the sewage, the things, the roads. And then, look at other things, but the things that the people need right now. That's all I ask.
The Juanon Union?
I think that I want to kind of discuss tonight, particularly about the priority also. But I know one thing, that if you're going to have a sports complex here, you're going to really need to support all the businesses and people in town. And one of the things that I have noticed over the years, and I brought this up from there Saturday morning, is that we do not have any community to put our businesses in town. Any kind of community with our, with our town folk and our businesses. And when you have a sports complex, no matter how it's funded, whether it's a sales tax or otherwise, you're going to really need the help and the cooperation of businesses if you want to put signs out there. It would be great if there are, oh, well, they build us a field, that wouldn't be a bad thing to go look for. And I completely, you agree with Geras, I know our children need a place to play. However, to me, it's horrible when they have to let, the city has to let that park become, it's a horrible convenience to have them play. Because we have, we have not picked it up. The Lions Club just re-did the children's park out there, and, you know, it was, it was just, the city was appreciating taking care of that seven years ago, and they did not. So we, we done that, and the city's going to be taking care of that again for us, and they've been very helpful to the Lions Club, and getting that back up and stuff, and we're still working out there. So my main thing is that. And then, I'd like to also invest in alma college thing. There is so many rules that are going around town, as to apply, or try not, or yes, or if not, that is paid. So it would really be wonderful if they could get our, from the paper, from your perspective, apply that amount, as not being paid. And if you're two years in arrears, point out, because a lot of people do feel like, if you couldn't meet that obligation, then how are you going to meet this other obligation? You might feel like after a year or so, you just can't do it, you know? And if you all come to move out, you may not be able to do it. However, we only see growth in Florisville, and Florisville is moving a great job for what they're doing. But we have access to our assets that we need to more crudely pass out, and use in particularly with internet service, particularly with waste water, particularly with streets. And I think if you've got the city of Florisville set up this much and looking good, you wouldn't have any problem with having the businesses get behind you and saying, okay, let's do a sports complex. But let's put it in priority that our master plan is played initially, and that's all I ask of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Pedro Levada? Nupia Lev? Mr. Charles?
Ernau Skier. So, I, um, good evening to you, you're in a pool. I'm quite honest with you, I'm a poor, but you're like baseball fields are such, this you feel. And I just, part of it, these guys have to, the little league has to pay for it all in your, your own pocket, for others. That shouldn't happen. My question would be, if the field's in such disrepair now, and it's not being taken care of, how do we expect to take care of it all, playing a million dollars, so clear? Why don't just pay back? And, and invest it in repairing and making it and save for these kids? I've been involved, I don't know how to recover the law enforcement officer in twenty-seven years, I know football fields are needed for kids, and we need it. But I don't think we need a one-point-eight, uh, million-dollar sports dollar. One of my questions would be, the board, if, you know, if you were able to answer, has, has the board looked into getting private memorials? When I lived in the Dallas County, or in Lee City, they had a private concern going, we built five or six ball fields that are replicas of, uh, maybe more fields. And these things are open to the public, the Leaks pay a fee, you pay for, every time you go, you, to use it, you depend for it, and they maintain the fields. They, these, this place was gorgeous. They had, you know, the ball fields, they had soccer complex, they had batting cages, they had football house, you can get food, and soda, and drinks. I, I don't think that would be the way, no, you need to buy an industry to build it, that would come out of taxpayer pocket. The other thing is, has anybody done a feasibility study, has a lot or not, a, a one-point-eight million dollar facility is needed? Is it going to be utilized? Okay.
And this one, I know I'm going to butcher, it appears to be like Joanne.
Come on.
Your, your hand is too fancy.
Thank you for your time. Regarding DC's question, um, that was asked, and you could not answer, regarding the payment for alma college. I do recall when I attended the city council meeting, Monica Flores stated to her knowledge, it had not been paid. So she, she did stand up and recognize that. I also wonder, when we are concerned, as everyone is, about the children and having the ball field, what can we teach them in terms of responsibility? When we can't make payments on what to do, how are we teaching the responsibility for what they need to do, and be accountable for? At the city council meeting I attended, we talked about having volunteers to help out with the parks, and getting people involved in, as I recall, Jim Miller volunteered his part. I'm sure many would. I just think more money could be put towards repairing what we have already, than going in further depth, when you do not have the internet service, and you do not have the streets, and you do not have the water. So please consider all of that in priority. I wish the passion that seemed to be with those sports complexes by some was also integrated into what's been for Florisville and its businesses. Thank you.
Uh, I graduated here in nineteen forty-eight, fifteen for this month, I'll be back three years. Forty-eight, we had seventeen hundred and eight population, and, uh, forty-eight, and I graduated. Which, I can't, that's making me a little nervous. No, I'm going to, on Saturday morning, I presented a plan, uh, which some of my life, and others, the readers, and I, I covered, uh, truth, uh, with all, uh, you know, competitive, you know, and I know my steps, my oldest, I mean, my stepdaughter, and one of my stepsons, swim, I guess, in the sea, but, 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 uh, even, uh, I think this is tied to the sports complex real, uh, real well. I'm a hundred percent in favor of, of watching the finances of the gold. But I feel like we got a little bit too much negative floating around. When I went into business for Allen, I, uh, did fifty, fifty, ninety fifty, I borrowed two thousand dollars, thank goodness, from my mother. But anyway, I, so I've had a lot of experience in sixty-one years, grew into twenty-five million dollar a year deal, and in the course of the phase of evaluation, lost it all, all the time. So, I just would like to say, uh, with control, I'm in favor of the sports complex. I can only give that.
Is there anybody else that has not had an opportunity to speak? Thank you.
Uh, public hearing is during the seven twenty-five.
Thank you very much. We're going to open our regular meeting now, y'all are welcome to stay.
I would like to just say thank you for all of you that did attend, and especially those that did speak tonight, we appreciate your input. Thank you. Oh, well.
I'll be right back.
I'll see y'all again next time. Two more seconds? Yeah, I'll go back.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
And I'll go on to you, what's your role?
FDC regular meeting, May seventh, two thousand twelve. FDC regular meeting, May seventh. May seventh, two thousand twelve, we call to order at seven twenty-eight. All members present are Monica Flores, Rebecca Silva, Frank Gonzalez, and Ms. Juana Peace, Colonel Perez, and so. Ms. Martinez is going over with us, and David Longres will be back. Okay, um, we're going to pass up the. We have any citizens input, I appreciate it, and, uh, we're very welcome. Come on up. Thank you. Okay, some input, uh, all bins, all bins, we're at two minutes, or April second, two thousand twelve meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for April second, two thousand twelve meetings?
Make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, CNA FDC property office in discussion will be in post session in accordance with the government clause in chapter six, v. two, subsection five five one point zero seventy-two. Liberations about will property, any action taken on items discussed will be voted on in open session. Do I have a motion to go into the decision? Second by Mr. T., all in favor?
Aye. We're going to go into executive session, you will come back out.
Do I have a motion to rescind the offer of CBG, that says to heat and air conditioning?
I know that we rescind the offer made on March the fifth, twenty twelve, to sell track one and two acre track, I'm sorry, track one and two acre track at the Lowland Home Business Park, at twenty-five thousand per acre, to CBG Construction Heating and Air Conditioning, for the development of cottages.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Ortiz, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All against, all against, I don't think against it.
She's against it.
Motion passes three to one. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second. Make the motion. Yeah, we'll get yourself up.
Yeah, seven, uh, four to three.